Calling the meeting to order, if I could ask all to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag-
...of the United States of America- and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Martin?
Here. Ms. Rossikowicz?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Mayor Elliott? Mr. Gendron?
Here.
Mr. Leary?
Here.
Six present, one absent. That's not a good start. Our first item is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting on December 17th. I'd entertain a motion by Ms. Rossikowicz, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item, permission to enter. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Martin. To Mid-America Administrative and Retirement Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $47,250 to provide for planned administration, professional review, IRS tax, and regulatory compliance services for Lowell Public Schools; 403B investment programs which are funded from voluntary salary reductions made by eligible employees of the Lowell Public Schools; a three-year contract expiring in December 31st, 2017, and fees paid under this contract are based on the number of actual participating LPS staff. Funding will be provided by the local budget superintendent's office contracted services; to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees in the amount of $12,000 to provide recruitment services for the superintendent of school search with technical assistance in funding focus groups, developing leadership criteria, checking resumes and references, and interviewing coordination; funding provided by the local budget superintendent's office contracted services. Before the vote, I just wanted to go into a little bit of detail of the MASC piece because we did go after request for proposal. There were three answers. This is the lowest bid. And just to refresh the committee's memory on this particular line item, we are asking all is included, according to the subcommittee meeting, from personnel. It's $12,000 for this particular piece. The area where you have to bring to attention is in the policy and procedural pieces of Lowell Public Schools, we are supposed to advertise in the Boston Globe as well as the Lowell Sun. And so that advertisement is not recommended by the MASC because they're going to do that large web of sending out announcements to all administrators in the state. They do recommend for us to have a $2,000 advertising fee for it to be in EdWeek, which is the number-one professional literature circulating for jobs in the field, especially in superintenencies. So this is interesting for us because since we do have it in practice and in policy that we usually do advertise our jobs in the Boston Globe and Lowell Sun, which will be about $8,000, you would have to change that piece of policy for us to not advertise in that way and just to take the recommendation of MASC. So those are all of the pieces. They're not directly related to the permission to enter, but they're all pieces that we really want to decide in this search. So if there are any questions or if you want to vote on the permission to enter and then discuss this additionally, I'd be happy to do that.
Mr. Leary?
Why don't we first vote on the permission to enter? I think the majority believes in that, and then we can have a further discussion on the additional part of it.
Great. Excellent.
So I can motion to approve.
Seconded by Mr. Conway. Although, sorry, roll call. Ms. Martin? Yes. Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott? Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved. If my colleagues would indulge me, I would recommend if we could move forward on the moving monies from the suspense account so we can enter into the contract. And then I would actually say with the advertising question, that seems like something we might want to discuss at the, I would venture to guess, at the next personnel subcommittee.
To make a motion to make that move from the suspense account into the personal account.
Excellent. Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Gendron. Roll call vote. Ms. Martin? Yes. Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott? Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved. And we can leave the remainder to be discussed at our next, at the next subcommittee. Any other questions, comments, before we move forward? Yes, Mr. Gendron?
I just had a question. So the policy, it sounds like it's a mandatory policy that we have that we have to advertise in the Globe and the Sun. Is that true?
That has been part of the past practice, and it is written in policy. So that's something that would have to be not attended to in this particular case by the committee. And that's the recommendation. So as Ms. Martin beat me to it, but we should most assuredly plan a personnel subcommittee meeting. We'll invite all the members, and then you can discuss those details, and you probably want to get the process in motion. So I will do that as early as tomorrow.
That sounds like a good idea. Personally, I think that one of the benefits of using MASC was the fact that we didn't have to pay to advertise. So hopefully, we can go forward in that way. But I agree, it probably makes sense to discuss that at the personnel subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to memorials. Janet Fenlin, Hooly Mulligan, mother of Susan Mulligan, Shaughnessy School Principal, grandmother of Daniel Simmons, LHS Freshman Academy teacher, and Julie Simmons, Riley School teacher. Julia Kong, Lowell High School student. And Marta Hersak, LHS Freshman Academy Science teacher. If we could all rise for a moment of silence in darkened chambers. May they rest in peace. Our subcommittee reports, first is for the Lowell High School Subcommittee Report, meeting on Tuesday, January 6, 2015. Mr. David Conway, Chair.
Make a motion to delay for the next school committee meeting.
Motion by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Rossikowicz. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Second is for the Personnel Subcommittee, approval of the minutes for the meeting of Monday, December 15th, 2014. Connie Martin, Chair. If you will indulge me, this is just a written report. I've already given the report at our previous meeting. So I'd entertain a motion to accept the written minutes by Ms. Rossikowicz, seconded by Ms. Duncan Scott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving very quickly along, I will say, to the reports of the superintendent. Our first report from the superintendent is the 2014-2015 district goals. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Martin. This document of goals is continuing the work that we have established over time. Basically, the first two, three goals are superintendent's goals, but the other goals include the goals of the assistant superintendents and to set the standard in the consistency in transition. These are the goals for the district. I did take the liberty, because these become very dense when we look at evidence and action steps, to just list the goals on the first page. And I will just go through those goals, and then I will go to the document if, in fact, there are other questions about evidence and whatnot. But the first professional goal, and just to let you all know that we're working on developing comprehensive continuing and coherent instructional system and monitoring that with fidelity across the school system. So that's tier-one instruction. We continue to work on it. We continue to look at the data points that prove the work that we're doing and look at proficiency together as a team. So that's the first goal. The district was, it's a continuation. Last year, it was a little bit more focused on the first year of the evaluation system. This year, it's broadening a bit as we're looking at proficiency across the board together. The next is the educator evaluation system. We continue. That is a project, and we will make sure we meet the deadlines, negotiations, and whatnot to make sure it's going to the best system it can be. In Goal Three, family and community engagement, using current data and the knowledge of communication, we are using all kinds of systems to refocus and overhaul our communication, trying to improve our social media perspective, trying to do a better job at surveying in multi-languages. There are a number of action steps as we go forward to improve the overall public relations and public participation. There has been a good deal of motion as far as our community partnerships through grant proceedings and also just working with our agencies to build the best collaboration we can to benefit our students. When we get into management and operation, again, providing a physical environment conducive to teaching and learning that incorporates educational space and unique programs and enrollment needs at Lowell Public Schools. If we wish to look at that in more detail, that will include all of the moves that we're looking at. What about space? Next year will be, one year, but the year after that, we're going to need to look at space. So we'll be coming forward with those kind of plans as the future, and of course, maintaining the long-range planning for the school district. Goal Five, that's continuing the school progress as well as continuing to focus system of support in the Lowell Level Three schools. The district team will offer support to all other schools in the district to make sure we maintain momentum and continue progress. This work is detailed, and as we go into those goals, we can look at that, but it's not different but more targeted than years gone by. The more we learn, the more data we use, and we deepen the outcomes to make sure that we stay Level Three and above. And so we want to move schools and continue to move the instruction in a manageable way. Goal Six, continues the work of the alternative programs where we look at the successful dropout prevention programs that have given results both nationally and with our own students in Lowell, and continue to assess and redefine alternative school programs. We have added to our alternative school programs at the Career Academy, and there is an engagement center, which is an addition plus its other goals and outcomes in that particular area. And then, of course, continuing to improve the attendance rate using that intervention. Dropout prevention starts from very young children. Attendance is an incredibly important indicator, and we're looking at those systems of reducing failure rates from a much younger perspective. So that is the overarching goal, just so you can kind of look at that at a glance. If you look at the document, which of course, as always, when systems like ours that are so large write goals, it's a seven-page document. So if you look at the first goal, which I talked about, assessing and continuing to develop a comprehensive and coherent instructional system. Our theory of action, continue to deepen that goal. The outcome of improved instruction is our teachers are very talented and making sure we give them the information to know how the kids are doing, to provide them the support system. That's the overarching focus of the district. And so if we look at that, we want to make sure that there's professional learning to support that. We want to make sure we have a coherent look at what tier-one instruction, tier-one instruction is the instruction at grade-level standard. We have to make sure that there's at-grade-level standards happening in every classroom and then provide the extra support systems that children who are not at grade level are able to do. And so there are many more bulleted items there, mentoring support for new administrators, administrative coaching and support for all. I am, as always, continuing to go into schools on a regular basis, give feedback to principals using the Teach Point system to make sure we're evaluating with equity and fidelity. You're looking at data before I go, looking at their goals and see actual practice of what's going on for the district goals as well as what we're learning together as a cohort. So that's the work that is going on as far as professional learning, and the evidence is here. We want to make sure we continue to have another rise in the accountability level that another school breaks into at least Level Two or One, and we continue to maintain stability. It's dense, so I ask up these questions as we go, or if I'm being too detailed, I'll take any feedback, but I just wanted to be able to... So if there are any questions, if not, I can just continue. Okay. So the education evaluation system, we know that everybody's writing SMART goals together, and if that happens, the alignment of the district initiatives will come together. We're focusing, we're continuing to focus on the process. We are continuing to implement and negotiate the district determine measures pieces. I met, actually, as early as today with the JCE. That's the advisory group that's, that when things are coming in or changes are happening, we have a collective group that advises me. And people know before we push forward what is coming. And so it's all about empowering us to set personal goals and goals of student learning outcomes with students that makes a difference and makes sense. Your evidence is agendas and data and growth. We will continue the practice, and this is in the curriculum section as well, where you will, as a committee, through the curriculum subcommittee meeting, get three different outcomes, the mid-year and the end-of-the-year outcomes, and us trying to, as we call it, triangulate the data so we kind of can see the MCAS and the summative data through our formative data. So that's part of the work through ed evaluation and also our curriculum work. Leadership in community engagement. As we continue and to deepen the best practices, we try to get more feedback in a real way. Shortly, within the next couple of weeks, we'd like to have a business partnership meeting where we look at the translated survey that was helped, assisted through Project Learn, and look at responses from parents in their languages, which will be nice information for us, to then, in fact, deepen and trying to diversify the groups with whom we work. So those are all the pieces, and I'm overlying instead of going over each bullet. So I wonder if there are any questions, please? Yes.
Thank you. My only question with regard to the surveys that were distributed by Project Learn, do we have any idea at this point how many surveys have actually been returned?
That was, I, there was a good percentage. I do not have that data. I did call Susan Lynn today, and she and I spoke of the fact that we wouldn't be presenting them within the next couple of weeks. I do not know the return rate. I always know what the title was, but I can actually send that to you in email tomorrow. I can get the information. I'm just not quite sure.
And what's the deadline in terms of when that survey is going to be shut down? And then?
I, I don't know if it's still alive. I have to be honest. I don't know if it was done before vacation. I thought that was a small window, and it stopped at this particular point, but I will, I'll give you the details on that, Ms. Rossikowicz. I can send that to the entire committee tomorrow. Thank you.
Any other questions?
But I think it's done. I think it's finished. And then, of course, us continuing to plan for the future, look ahead, the cost, the master plan, the 10-year plan, and looking at our assessment of what we need for space for students. We know that we have a critical need for space in our middle schools within the next two years, and we will be looking for that. If we look at the curriculum instruction and assessment goal, it is to provide structures and assistance for all schools. It's an interesting process. We have put in place a full-court press at our schools that need to improve to stay above the Level Four status piece. There's a substantial amount of work that's going on, especially in the McGovernor and the Robinson schools. And our curriculum team and our coaches are there on a regular basis, working with staff. That is helping change practice, but looking at data to make sure there's progress as we go. At a curriculum subcommittee meeting, I know Ms. Abrams is continuing, is going to present more about this, but that's the focus. It's not much different than goals we've had in the past, but it's really important for us to stay focused and to make sure we're making the progress as we go.
Just a quick question, thank you. Just through you, to, I guess, the curriculum assistant superintendent. How are we interacting, like, the curriculum team with the technology department? Is that something that we're getting better at? Is something you can actually start measuring? We've only done this for, I guess, a couple of years, but are we ready to start looking at the progress we're making? Or are we not making progress?
I interact with them quite frequently.
I know you do, but I mean, like, how's your team?
I just wanted to let you know that.
Appreciate that.
No, I think there are good things that are going to be happening that are really going to make the two departments come together and move forward in terms of technology and working with students, in terms of what materials we have that we can work together. And just basically, there's a lot of communication between technology and myself in terms of what is going on at the schools. I know Mr. Santos and Ms. McQuiggin are always out at the schools doing certain things too. So I think it's been a slow start, but I think we see things that are exciting that are going to start to happen and really build that. I mean, the last big thing that we really worked on together, I talked about at the last meeting, and that was on the breaking code that was going on in all the schools. And that was, that was really a joint effort between the curriculum office and the technology department. But we have more work to do on that, but we are moving forward.
No, and just a comment. I think it's a hard thing, obviously, to do when you have two different departments, and we just really started to invest technology again. And it's tough when you have people going in one direction and another team of people who have maybe different thoughts on how to achieve results. So you really got to be able to break down the silos of the walls, or whatever way you want to call it. If you can do that in a quick way, you're going to show a lot of progress in a fast way and really reasonable timeframes. The key, though, is to break down those silos, and that's hard to do when everybody's on a moving train trying to achieve everything quickly. So if you can achieve that, we're going to start to see really good results. But that's really going to be a challenge for the Lowell Department to try to work together to make sure that we're actually breaking down those silos. Thank you.
Right. I agree with that, but I also think that the students, when they're engaged in technology and curriculum and technology, we learn a lot from that. So that really gives us the direction we want to go in. They are enthused above all when you talk to technology. Thanks.
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Ms. Martin. I guess anecdotally, I have to just say, I walked through every classroom in the city of Lowell, so that's my honor. And since this committee and the committee before it invested in infrastructure for technology, it has been a substantial, substantial gain. I see SMART boards and interactive whiteboards and children on iPads everywhere. And in every classroom, it's one of the things I look at. What are kids doing with the computers? Where are they? Whether we have a lot of them or a few of them, we are using technology in instructional practice in a much more engaging way with children. And that's the move that all of the Common Core is telling us. So the move in the last two years in the investment in technology and what we heard today, adding to that, it is very exciting. And I think that for those of you who have been walking through with me for a number of years, you will see a substantial difference. We have lots of kids writing all over the place, which I love, but we also see the use of technology for presenting purposes and for kids using it. So I know that we have grown in a number of ways, and we still have more to do. So the communication will continue to increase, but you're right, Mr. Leary, it's something, you know, formally, how are we doing that?
No other questions?
Three AM on number six. We ready? Okay. So this is, so we'll have all kinds of data. We look at the strategic data on student progress. That's the work every day that we do with fidelity. The alternative programs, using the current data and knowledge of successful dropout prevention programs, the students will continue to assess and refine alternative school programs. So part of the positive part of this is over time, since I've been superintendent, we have decreased the dropout rate. That is a goal of the district. We look at every single child and make sure that there's some way that we can make sure that they continue with us as successful completion, to a successful completion of education. So there's a good deal of work that's going on, engagement model for children 16s and older. There's an implementation plan of grant awards. We've done such a good deal of work. Another movement by this committee and the committee before it was the use, putting a director of alternative programs into place that oversees all alternative programs to make sure that that service to children is improving. That has helped substantially. We work on positive behavior intervention, which we're doing in many schools. There are a number of details, but the outcome was in that initial goal of all kids, no matter what pathway and what opportunities you have, deserve the support. And alternative programs have improved a great deal over the time that I've been in Lowell Public Schools. If you go to the last goal, attendance, all our data, all the information about education tells us clearly, if you're not here, you're not going to be able to excel. And so the work that's going on in student support services, that's looking at attendance intervention and dropout prevention that render results nationally and in Lowell, it structures, making sure with our intervention team, our attendance team, which are twofold, and the Office of Student Services, they're looking at long-term interventions with chronic absenteeism from a younger age. So those are all parts of the pieces. There are all kinds of details that are included in these goals, and I take any questions about it. But overarching, the goals continue, they're deepening every single year, but as a district, they're tied with school goals, and they're tied with what we need to accomplish as a district and all of the people up here, what we're working on. So that's what these pages are for your comments, review, and feedback.
If there aren't any further questions, I'd entertain a motion to accept the district goals as a report of progress by Ms. Rossikowicz, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you very much. It's my understanding that the next report on home education, it's requested to be delayed, so I'd entertain a motion to delay that report by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Gendron. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Our next topic is, from the superintendent reports, is for the school innovation grant opportunities. Madam Superintendent?
I'm sorry, I'm a little lost. Well, I wrote the report, so I think I can remember it. This is a grant award to a STEM program. The other one was the grant award. It was an answer to a motion. Yeah, I guess it's not here. I'm sorry. This is an ocean tour. It's a motion that was written by former Mayor Patrick Murphy and Robert Gignac to work with city administration and community to develop an integration grant program to fund teacher and staff-driven educational programs and projects. You know, it was an interesting time when this was written. We didn't have a funding source. This was an unfunded mandate. It was an idea back then. Since then, the idea of using grant funding for a variety of purposes has really demonstrated a good deal of progress in Lowell Public Schools. And so just, so you know, we've had more grant opportunities, and also, although there hasn't been funding for this, small grants are sent out to teachers on a regular basis. They're sent out by principals like they always have. There are Target Grants. There are small Walmart Grants. But also, since we've had the affiliation with Grant Writer and Project Learn, teachers can also get help on writing small grants. And so that's something that has happened as a result of the work since the former administration was here. We have increased our grant receipts overall, and all of us go through what is available through funding sources, and we work collaboratively. So from the small teacher grants, we also do that as a department. In the next report or a little bit later, I'm going to talk about a collaborative report that happened through our technology report. So the innovation piece, although it wasn't funded, we are able to seek out and look for grant funding in a way that's manageable for small grants for teachers, but as well as a district. So I just wanted to answer the progress in grant funding. As a result, it's bigger than what was requested, which was trying to find a funding source for some small grants for teachers at that particular time. But I just wanted to be able to report that for once, we did better than expected. So that's a, that's a good thing.
If there aren't any questions, I'd entertain a motion to accept as a report of progress by Ms. Rossikowicz, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We've also had a request from the superintendent for a suspension of the rules, motion made by Mr. Gendron, to suspend the rules for the purpose of making an announcement on a recent funding victory. recent funding victory.
Yes. Earlier today, we found out through the work of our collaborative team especially, Technology Director Bill Silver, his team, Ari Santos and Laura McQuiggin, as well as Casey Nelson, they wrote an amazing grant. I have heard that it was one of the best submitted in the state. And so we have been awarded over $1 million for us to in fact look strategically at improving the infrastructure for technology in our middle schools and by the fall of next year, 2015, to be able to have a one-to-one ratio of technology to our kids in, in middle schools. We have known for our data that our fifth grade, our transition years are always challenging developmentally and academically. And so this grant, as a result of that work and also the assistance of Susan Lynn, who put the grant together, did submitted and, and was part of the workforce, helped our team at that level, but the Lowell Public Schools Technology Team did a phenomenal job at writing a grant that talked about infrastructure from kid to outcomes. And so I wanted to congratulate them and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak of it publicly. There was a press release on WBC. It's big news. And so thank you for the opportunity, but we also have here with us this evening Director of Technology, I know it's a bigger name than that, Bill, I'm sorry, Bill Silver, as well as his, our specialist, technology specialist, Ari Santos. And so Bill, I don't know if you want to say anything, but we are very proud and very thankful for your work.
Never turned down an opportunity to say a few words. Thank you for suspending the rules and acknowledging this. This was a great grant. It's for a significant amount of money and it's going to be used in a place where we desperately need to make some changes. And being able to improve the infrastructure, the overall reliability of technology, in addition to some teaching tools and learning tools that we're, we're going to incorporate is going to make a huge impact in the middle schools. So thank you all.
Recognizing Mr. Gendron.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. So I wanted to, you know, as Chairman of the Technology Subcommittee, I've been able to kind of watch up close how this department has operated over the past year. And I think that 2014 has been a great year for technology in the Lowell Public Schools. This department has done a great job with stretching our technology dollar, both in the equipment that they, that they buy and install, as well as the way they go about, unique ways they go about supporting people across the district. Response times across the district are, are improving daily because of the work that these guys do. And this grant is a great way to start 2015. I think one of the unique things about this grant is it's going to allow us to, as the superintendent said, overhaul eight of our middle schools across the city. And it's also going to be targeted at identifying educational issues with our fifth graders and also using the technology to intervene and help to educate. So it's not just identify, but it's identify and intervene. So it's a really great opportunity for us, going to be targeted at improving MCAS scores. And it's also going to provide for professional development and support. So the teachers are going to be educated on how to utilize the technology and then they're going to be given the support throughout the, the term to continue to provide the education for the kids. So on behalf of the Technology Subcommittee, I want to congratulate Mr. Silver, Mr. Santos, Ms. McQuiggin and everybody for the work that they did in submitting this grant and look forward to implementing it with you in the, in the coming year. Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Just real quick. Well said, Mr. Gendron. I think really at the end of the day, it's a good collaboration between the Technology Department and Project Learn. And I think this is something when you have people who are breaking down, as we talked about earlier, breaking down different barriers, you can have a lot of success. So I, I too congratulate the Technology Department and Project Learn for an excellent grant received and I look forward to the positive results that we're going to receive because of their hard efforts. Thank you.
Excellent. So I would entertain a motion to accept this as a report of progress by Mr. Gendron, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations to the team that, that brought this in for our district. We're all very appreciative. Thank you. And for taking time out to come to the meeting, that's very nice. Not to imply that that doesn't happen often, but it doesn't happen often. Moving on to our new business, requesting a vote to accept a grant award of $5,000 to support STEM programming from MACOM Technology Solutions. Madam Superintendent, if you'd like to give us the information on this?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Martin. Yes, MACOM has, wants to donate $5,000 to the Lowell Public Schools to encourage the implementation of workshops, pre-engineering programs, robotics and offering our middle school students a STEM career pathway. This is not the first time we've received money from MACOM. They're interested in us. We're really nice partners. And so I need a vote of the committee to accept the $5,000 and I think that will be an easy request, so I just need a vote.
Ms. Rossikowitz.
I just have one question. So is this, is this money focused to all of our middle schools or is it just targeted to a specific few?
It is for all of our middle schools to, to create the STEM pathway. So that's, and going through the Coordinator of Science and Social Studies, Martha Kohn, it will be used equitably across the middle schools.
Fantastic. Thank you.
So a motion to accept this award by Ms. Rossikowitz, seconded by Ms. DeLeary. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, so for, I apologize, for money where we need to do a roll call. Ms. Martin? Yes. Ms. Rossikowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent. Before we do adjourn, we do have one final request for a suspension of the rules for a report from the administration regarding the oft-asked question of will there be school tomorrow?
Yes, I have four messages from the Lowell Sun that have come in since we've been sitting here. Couple before because Rob Mills is on it, so always we speak before evenings. Due to the fact that it's going to be an extremely cold day below, 20 below, and we are going to cancel school tomorrow, with, with that structure in place, just so parents can know this evening, we will get all of the information out, but we will be canceling school tomorrow. Most schools in the area have a delay. A delay is difficult for us. If we have kids out there earlier not knowing about the delay, that would be criminal. So you know, that's what we're going to do. So we're going to get that out to everybody's homes and for all you parents here, you're the first to know. You can text before they even get the call.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Gendron.
On, on the way down here, as I was going out the door, my son said, I want you to come back with no school tomorrow. So I'm happy to report that, that I was able to deliver for him.
So we will, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment by Ms. Scott, seconded by Mr. Conway. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Ms. Scott. Mr. Conway.
I did the, I did the.